So they don't need to-
Welcome everyone to our work session tonight and we'll move right along and
I'm trying to get this chair off.
Recognize Dr. Nolte to start off with our budget and Ms. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Francis, members of the board. We're going old school tonight. No projections. We'll start in the notebook. Just a little bit of background on the budget. We got the commissioners last year, we were up doing our normal PowerPoint and they asked us to come huddle around the table. So I took the liberty of calling Chairman Kirkpatrick of the commissioners and said, "What do you want?" And he said, "Well, if you'll do a general presentation up front and then we'll huddle and go through lines." So we're going to try to echo that tonight and Monday. And we'll have three of us doing the general information and then Angie will take us through the lines. So Allison, I think you're going to go first. Should be under child nutrition. Most of this should be in your notebook. We'll go to the folder-
Question is, is when? That's Monday?
Monday is the public hearing on the budget at 6:00-
That's right.
Prior to our regular-
Part of our normal sequence.
And then the commissioners' meeting is-
After that.
After that.
It's good to be there.
I think it has.
It's the following Monday at 2:00.
At 2:00.
All right. In your child nutrition tab, the very first page is just some general information concerning our program. Our increase in our budget this year is less than 1%. It's $5,492. Our expenses are made up of 56% labor, 39% food, and 5% overhead cost-wise. Average cost year-to-date to produce a breakfast is $1.53. And between the breakfast reimbursement rate for a paid child plus what we're charging, $1.25, we are making 2 cents per breakfast. And at lunch, at K through 5 for a paid student, between the 2:55 the parent pays and the 39 cents we get from the federal government, we're making $2.84. So we're actually losing 22 cents for every pre-K through 5th grade meal that we serve. At the middle and high school level, we're making 13 cents per meal. So they have an additional quarter in their meal price because they have some higher-end entrees that we serve at those grade levels. But on the budget, on the next page, you can see that the items that have increased are the salaries by 3%, retirement proposed increase of 1.31%, and an increase in medical insurance. And the only other line item that increased for next year is line 361, which is the membership dues and fees. With the addition of Melanie Bachelor to my staff, she's a registered dietitian and we're helping her to pay her license fees for that. And under our revenues, the items that have changed, we are getting less money in USDA grants in commodity foods due to a loss of meal participation. And our sales lunch full pay has decreased by $18,000. And that's also due to a loss of participation plus a change in meal categories. So some of the kids that were in the paid category are now in the free category because of our CEP schools, Clyde, Central Haywood, and North Canton. And then our supplemental sales have decreased. Is there any questions I can answer for anybody?
Any questions for Ms. Francis?
How are the substitutes going? I know we, are you having an easier time finding substitutes with your cafeteria staff?
No.
Even though we raised-
I think with the unemployment rate being so low, historically low, it's just, we're really struggling to find folks to work with us even with that increased pay.
Okay.
As far as, this really isn't a kind of budget related. Is the food quality going to get better now that different bunch in Washington?
The only things that have been changed since our change in president, they have kept the sodium limits at what they were. They were supposed to get more stringent, which everything already tastes like cardboard and has no flavor. So that didn't really help us too much. It kept it where it was at. They did change, we're allowed to serve 1% flavored chocolate milk versus skim now, which my bid will go out this summer for milk, so we might be able to bring that 1% back, which they're so used to the skim now. I don't know that it'll make a big difference. And then, what was the third thing? The whole grain waiver. They were going to make us go back to 100% whole grains and they left that at a 50% whole grain for now. So it didn't really help anything. It just kept it from getting worse for the next couple of years.
If it tastes better, more participation.
And we've tried to put more food, more money into food this year on some other, we did some Asian things that cost a little bit more than we used to, than we normally spend on an entree, and some hamburgers and some different things. We've put more money into that hoping to increase participation. And the Asian days, we do every other Tuesday is an Asian dish and the kids really like that. So we've been trying to look for some new items to encourage that participation.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Allison.
Thank you.
Who's next?
She has another engagement, so we'll let her go. Is that okay with everyone? Joe's going to go next, talk about capital outlay.
In the tab before child nutrition, there should be a proposed expenditures capital 1819 there. The top three items, those are not our local capital. If you look to column five, it defines where those funds are coming from. The first one is HVAC for Bethel Middle School Gym. We have lottery funds available for that. We're in the process of bidding that out. I'm waiting on approval from DPI on the plans to get that approved where we can build. Central Haywood High's renovation, we're using the local fund for that. And we are bidding this week, or we're doing a pre-bid. And the next one is access control for Central Haywood High IT. We're seeking ADM funds for that in the amount of $55,000. I've got to go ask the commissioners for approval for us to use the ADM funds. But, and there's a $75,000 ADM balance. So we're trying to get that spent down, but use it wisely. Any questions on that?
Yeah, my projected date is to when the gym's going to get, hopefully get finished?
At Central Haywood? I will know more on the 26th. That is our bid opening for the project. So once I receive bids, then we'll have a more tentative timeline and schedule. Okay. Next is our capital funds. This is what we've received from the commissioners or the county each year. I went down and I'll skip the line item by line item just and hit the high notes, but I've got roofs, we've got fire alarm, security. One of the items is replacing asbestos tile at Bethel Middle. Each year, the state requests that we remove any asbestos-containing materials from the facilities. And this is one of the projects we're looking at to try to keep in compliance with them. On down, just replacement of doors, windows, air conditioning, furniture, those are just miscellaneous items. I don't have anything in sight that we're going to spend on, but each year, there's always items that come up, doors, windows, that we need to replace. And the next one there is parking lot repairs. We have a number of parking lots that are getting in bad shape, that need some patching, repair, replace. So I'm trying to budget to spend and replace some of those. And then on down, I've got a maintenance vehicle, excavator, child nutrition, which we've been carrying in the budget for the last couple of years. This year, I'm looking at either cafeteria equipment or replacing dining room tables. A lot of our tables in the dining rooms are getting in bad shape. And if we can start budgeting to replace those, a little bit at a time, we'll eventually get those replaced and out of there. And the last item is for transportation. That's the purchase of an activity bus with security cameras for it. Any questions on that?
That money goes away real fast, doesn't it?
It does.
On the roofs, I know at one time, we had like a schedule of projected lives of the different roofs and when we thought we needed to sort of replacing them to sort of get ahead of the curve so we wouldn't be hit all at one time. Are we still looking at that schedule or?
Right now, we are, we are following it fairly close. A number of the roofs that on paper are due for replacement are still holding up. So I'm trying to buy as much life from those as I can without just throwing money at something that really there's nothing wrong with.
Okay.
These roofs that I am looking at replacing are roofs that are, they are becoming a problem.
Okay.
Will have a leak each time it rains or a couple of leaks throughout the year or something. So if they're not giving us problems, I'm trying to move that money somewhere else where it's needed more.
Okay. And as far as the activity bus, I know we're looking at putting security cameras on it, but have, I know with the new buses that were ordered, the yellow buses, we're looking at putting seat belts on those. The activity buses still, has that been discussed any or we're still wanting to sort of hold off on that?
I want to wait to put seat belts on activity buses until we get through this first year of putting activity buses, or putting seat belts on our yellow buses. And so once we get that implemented, because we want to implement it initially at the elementary school, we just feel like that's an easier place for us to be successful in year one and train those young students up to do that rather than trying to take a student that's been on a bus for most of their school career and try to change that habit there. We want to try to change it early. So once we get that first year under our belt, then we're going to have that conversation about looking at our wide activity bus purchases. That will increase the cost, probably about $10,000. So you're looking at a bus that we're buying now for around 90 will be close to $100,000 when we add those seat belts to it. You're looking at, you know, at least eight on an estimate, depend on what happens in prices in the coming years.
Okay.
Added to that cost.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Joe? Thank you, Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you.
I'm going to take us through the big picture of the current expense budget and then Angie will take us through the line items where, and you can just ask questions along the way. I think the first thing to say is that we're doing the best that we can to guess what the state is going to do. They stopped giving us planning budgets four or five years ago. They've told us that they'll, they'll give us one at some point, but they've not given us one. So most of the decreases or increases here are things that were decided a couple of years ago and they're being phased in over time, or they're recommendations that have come from a DPI budget office or some other place. But we really don't have a firm grip on what the legislature will do. And for that reason, I'll have a recommendation or two for you along the way about things that we need to think about. So under current expense budget, just the budget assumptions that you have to think about when you build a budget, you already heard Allison talk about the 3% salary increase. That's what we anticipate the state doing. We don't think they'll do more than that. They may do, they certainly may do less, but we have to plan for what we think it might be. The retirement rate has gone up pretty significantly from 17.13% to 18.44%. That's a rate increase of 1.31%. So that adds money to personnel cost. And then at the bottom of the page, the employer contribution for medical insurance has gone from 5,869 to 6,104. And to put that in, that's pretty hefty, isn't it? I see some nods. To put that in perspective, we have well over 900 employees. And anytime you have a full-time employee, that's, you just start with that number. I mean, that's just the number you have. And then you have whatever they make per hour or salary-wise, plus then the percentile cost. So you can see some pretty hefty increases there under the budget assumptions for just paying people. Any questions on that page? Or you just want me to roll through all of them, Mr. Francis, and get them, questions at the end?
If anybody has a question, just-
Just ask it along the way.
Okay.
Very good. The next page is a summary of increases that we're pretty much aware of or have been told to expect. The first is 131,000 needed to fund that 3% increase that we may get. Of course, it could be less than that, but if we got that, that would be 131,540 local employees. And then the benefit increases that I talked about earlier, that would cost us 166,490. And you can see how they're broken out across our employees. We'll show you a picture of local employees in a minute that those funds would go toward. There is a 76,000 to 10 increase in anticipated loss of months of employment. We expect the state to decrease 12 months of employment in the money that they give us for principals. They've told us that that was going to happen over time. And we'll actually see that in lines 189 and 182 when we go through the line items. And then there is a increase in what we anticipate that we will need to send to charter schools. That'll be on line 265 later. And that's an increase of 49,565. Now, that's not what we're giving them. That's just how much is going up. We expect the total to charters. And there, you know, there's brick and mortar, but there's lots of virtuals and other ones. And we have some information on that later, too. 931,161. So nearly a million. On the next page, the summary of locally funded positions. These are the people that we anticipate paying locally out of the 1819 budget. We have 6.05 administrators. Those are mainly system-wide people like maintenance, some foundation, transportation, positions like that. We have one assistant finance officer, 43.5 clerical across the schools, 29 skilled labor. That's most of Joe's folks. We are increasing two painters. We've gotten behind on our painting rotation. He is absorbing that in his budget, local current expense side of the budget. Seven teacher assistants, eight technicians. Those are the tech folks that work for Todd. 17 custodians, 13 of those have the full benefits. Five lead teachers. We're fortunate, we can put 10 of our lead teachers on state because they're a little higher paid. That doesn't hit the local budget. 29.5 classroom teachers, almost three and a half instructional support. That's like social workers, guidance, media. And just those are the lower-paid people in those categories because the higher-paid folks go in-state. Two assistant principals, and we'll lose months of employment there also. And 2.6 for the ROTC program offset. You know, some of that money comes from the military and some of that we pay. So 149.1 local positions that we anticipate out of next year's budget. Here's a recommendation that I have for you. It follows really pretty closely to what Dr. Garrett had recommended earlier. And I want to tell you the rationale behind that. The summary of the requests that we received this year from program directors and principals will be on lines 393 through 401. And I'm recommending that we, we fund the top seven of those. Those have been priority ranked before. I am not recommending that we put eight, nine, 10, and 11 in this version of the budget. And here's the thinking. Each year, we work really hard, Dr. Garrett, Angie, Joe, others of us, to try to finalize a budget this time of year. And it's never possible because we don't know what the state's going to do. We don't, we don't know exactly what our fund balance is going to be. You know, we don't know if it's going to be cold the rest of the winter or warm the rest of the winter. We don't know who's going to leave that costs more and we can put in a less expensive person. And to add to that list of unknowns, we have the SEC budget study around salaries, mainly classified people, a pay raise and about a pay step increase in about 10 years. And we don't have that in yet. So what we're recommending is that to you, is that we would proceed with those top seven items. And then when we know more about what the state's doing, when we get the step salary recommendations from the SEC budget study that you all authorized, that we come back to you when we're a little closer to the end of the year, we may know more about the state. We may certainly know more about our fund balance. So the cultural arts position eight, Angie and I have talked, we think we can pay that out of state money. That's 20% of a teacher. And the way we swap high ones and low ones out all year long, we think we'll be able to do that. The early college teaching position, and I wrote the grant and one of the initial grants for that, that would supplant biology and chemistry courses already taught by the college. We may have to revisit that later because the state is going to limit the number of credit hours that our high school students at the early college can earn free of charge. That's going to be 61, 2, or 3 going forward. But we'll be okay for next year. And then I have spoken with Alicia, and this would certainly help her with ESL if she added, if she added an interpreter and a teacher. But her numbers haven't changed a whole lot in the last year. And I would recommend that we hold on to that 141,604. That might help us if we really want to fix some of the salary steps for folks. And we've lost some folks through the years and y'all have talked about them and you called their names before. We might be able to fix that if we're lucky. So that's really the only recommended change that I have from what you all have been looking at for the last couple of months.
Additional SRO, is that our portion or is that just-
That's us. We pay for-
For the fund issue?
Yeah, we pay for those. You know, we may get lucky. We're meeting with the sheriff and the chiefs on the, I can't remember the date, 13th or 16th. I have it on my calendar. I think it's the 13th, the day, Tuesday after the board meeting. And we're going to make some recommendations out of that meeting to some of our state representatives. We hear from the federal level and the state level that there may be some money coming for that. So there's a chance that, you know, they may give us a lot of money and we can have a lot more, or that we may be able to do more than one. And we'll, you know, again, cross that bridge when we get to it, when we find out what the state and federal folks do. But I think we definitely want that one. We pay the salary and do some other things. They typically provide the car and those things.
And that SRO was, where are they going?
Well, we haven't decided that. We would bring you a recommendation and then let y'all arm wrestle over that. I know if you don't have an SRO, you would want one. Certainly, we would need to address the split between Canton Middle and Bethel Middle. And so you could, you could certainly take care of with both of those full-time. And it might be that they could, because they're a little smaller than Waynesville Middle and the two traditional high schools. And of course, we have one here at Central Haywood. They might be able to serve some other schools, too. But it would take care of that split for sure.
Talking with the sheriff, he recommends that scenario over at Bethel. So that would put one full-time at Bethel Middle, right?
Well, we would have an additional person. And we have a split between Canton Middle and Bethel Middle. So with, with, with putting all of it at one place and all of it at the other, then you could decide if they also served adjacent schools or schools that were really close. It would take care of the halftime person at Bethel Middle and Canton Middle, make both of those full-time. And then you just have to look at schedules or other funds that we hope we will receive from the federal or state folks.
We hope we have enough to put 45 SROs in 15 schools.
Yeah, it'd be nice. It'd be really nice. I think the time for that changes now. And if we don't, we don't see it in the next few months, then we may have missed a great opportunity across the country to fix that. On the next page, this is the supplement. This has already been approved by you. And this is what we would put in place. The top graph is what we would put in place for years of experience for certified people. The non-certified having 2%. The previous certified scale is at the bottom. And I know we've had some conversation about making that local supplement for hourly paid people higher. It's my recommendation to you, and we'll know more when the study comes in, that we fix the steps first. I think people would gain more if we moved them from year three to where they should be, which might be year eight or nine on a step than they would by one more percent. And you might get to do both over time, but I would recommend looking at the steps first. When I called Mr. Kirkpatrick and I talked to Mr. Francis about this, too, about the format of talking to the commissioners, he reminded me that we had not redone our formula and it runs through the end of this year. And I talked with him briefly. I also talked to Chairman Francis. And I think what we would like to do, if you don't have any objection, is ask for them to extend our current formula for a year. That will bring us some fairly substantial increases. And we'll show you those in just a minute. And then we would have all next year when we're not in a transition period to negotiate a new formula. So if there's no objection there, that's, that's what we would recommend. So, and this is that increase. If we ask them to continue it, and they did, our appropriation for 1718 was 15,532, almost 533. There would be an increase if we stayed on the current formula of 442, 686. And the overall estimated, of course, we don't know about students, you know, how big kindergarten's going to be and all that kind of stuff. It would be an estimated appropriation of almost 16 million, 15,975, 578. And then some of the stuff at the bottom is stuff that we've already talked about a little bit. The amount locally going up per student is a little over $42. The total per student is 21,0711. And then there's the information about the charter numbers. They get the 21,0711 paid monthly in case they're moving back and forth. And then if they happen to be at a virtual charter, it's just under $800, 790. Fund balance appropriation, the projected needs for 1819 so far, again, we still don't have all that information in that we, that's uncertain to us now, about 17, 17,767, 777. That would require a fund balance appropriation of 1.3. That would require a fund balance appropriation of 1.3. We're sitting there with 2.9 unobligated. A lot of the money that sits in fund balance is obligated to a particular grant. And if we're, and you all will have to coach me on this in terms of where we want that fund balance to be. But if we're working to get that at around 1.5, then this might be a really good year to work on those steps and do some other things to get it where you all want it to be, pretty consistently each year.
So that would be, that would be 1.6. If you're taking 2.9, that's unrestricted. 1.3, so that'd be 1.6.
That would get us pretty close.
Well, yeah, I, I think we've talked about it a million times. And I think Ms. Gardner feels comfortable around 1.5. So, I mean, yeah.
And of course, that is assuming, right now, we have 1.1 million appropriated in the 1718 budget. Taking us down to 1.6 is assuming that we will spend all of that 1.1. We will not, you know, we've had gaps of employment, just working on personnel projections. I can tell you that we're not going to spend all the 1.1. So we'll have, we'll have some bounce back once we get into August. And we've done all of our payables and posted that, those back in too.
We're, we're, our fund balance is a victim of Angie and her department really pinching pennies. And it's a blessing and a curse. It's more of a blessing. But they are constantly taking someone who retires in the middle of the year or moves or relocates and moving people out of local that are higher paid. And then, we hire someone usually that's even less experienced than that. So, they do a really good job, and that, that makes the fund balance look unstable at times, but really, it's just their, their hard work, in my opinion. Only one other page here before Angie runs us through the lines. Again, the uncertainties that I mentioned earlier that might want us to hold on some of those lines and see what that salary study looks like from SEC for people who are hourly-paid, or, or there are a few administrators who are tied to that same scale and have been for over a decade. And I've already mentioned the other things, fund balance and state stuff. So, any questions before we look at individual lines?
Do I have any questions? John?
Angie?
Okay. I'm just going to hit the highlights of the blue lines and talk a little bit about what we fund in those PRC or program areas. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me. In Program 001, our classroom teachers, of course, we, we fund our 29 and 1/2 teachers, five lead teachers. And that's where we also cover the summer employment for our two high school band directors and two high school head football coaches. And the next one is PRC 002. That total ends below line 53. That is central office administrative services. It includes anything dealing with you, the Board of Education, and central office services. That's not, for example, my department, we are located at the central office, but we're not considered dedicated to central office services. We are, we're, you'll find us down in 003 because we are a system-wide service. We pay everybody or write accounts payable bills for everybody, not just central office. So that 002 is dedicated to central office. And if I could just have, just a quick second, and Dr. Nolte is aware of this, going into 1819, starting July 1st, the per pupil expenditure is going to be on report cards for our 1819 report cards. And so, there's a lot of coding that's going to change. And what they're telling us at the state is whatever is true central office cost is going to be coded to a different location code so that they can pick that up. If we have system-wide services like technology, we're going to have to code that to an 810 that kind of spreads across our per pupil appropriation. And what they're saying is, you know, we're going to have to be ready to defend what that per pupil expense is on those report cards. And so, you'll hear more of that as we go through. DPI is working with finance officers, the Charter of Accounts Committee, to try to, you know, make sure that it's accurate. And, but anyway, all of it's going to be July 1st, and, and you'll hear, hear us talk more about that as we, they get further into that and developing those guidelines.
When was the timeline, I'm sorry? Did it was actually going to show up on the report card?
It will be in the fall of 2019, and it will be reflected on the 201819 school report cards.
Okay.
I'm assuming that's another one of them brilliant legislative decisions.
Well, Ms. Rogers, you know, what we'll have to look at, I mean, it's, it will be there for everyone to see. And, you know, we're not sure how much is going to be put on the report card. For example, if you have an elementary school that serves a high-level special needs students, that per pupil expenditure is going to look really high, really elevated.
Like Clyde?
Because you have such a high cost. You have one-on-one assistants, you have nurses. And so, but they've told us to be prepared to defend that. If you take a small school like Central Haywood, and we've kind of run some preliminary numbers and, and looking, their per pupil expenditure is very high. But if you take one principal salary and benefits and divide that among 100 students versus 1,000 students, you can see how that, anyway. So, central office administrative services, 002. The next category, the total falls after line 175, and that is non-instructional support. And that's where we pay all of our utilities. We pay clerical, custodians, HR, finance, lots of different things. That's a big piece of our budget. Out of a $17 million budget, 7 million, just over 7 million hits right there. The next category is, I'm sorry.
I did have a question that, Mr. Clark actually called me and asked me about the, we talked one time about the waste management contracting, and we're inside Town of Waynesville picking up some, some trash, and it's, there were, both of them are still on here.
It is, and.
So, we get that resolved, or?
Well, the Town of, do you want me to, you want me to say my piece in there and you say?
Go ahead.
On the Town of Waynesville power bills, it is, you know, on those bills, it's lighting, sewer, water, and dumpster fees. We have 35,000 budgeted. We do not, we only spend about 13,000 on that. What I try to do, if you looked at lines 76 through 80, those are our utilities. And at the end of the year, I try to balance those and make sure that I'm not over-budget in those areas because it's really difficult to know how much you're going to spend on utilities. Like, for example, last year, I was over-budgeting in water sewer by about 23,000, but these other lines allowed, you know, we didn't go over-budget in the 6530. Does that make sense? Because, and I don't know really how else to manage that at this standpoint, trying to determine what we're going to spend on utility and water and that type of thing. But you'll see 35,000, but that is really, we spent about 13.
Okay.
Does that help? Hannah, Joe, were you going to?
I'm, I was going to say the same thing.
Okay.
Hey, Town of Waynesville does pick up trash for three of our facilities. So, that's kind of why that number is low. I tried to review the numbers, and as far as per school, there's not a lot of difference in what we pay the Town of Waynesville versus Henson to do our waste pickup. So, the reason it looks smaller is because there's a lot smaller number of facilities that are operating and serving.
Okay. Thank you.
The next category is, follows line 213, that's school building administration. That's Program 005. There you'll see our assistant principals are there. We, that's where we send out a lot of school allocations to the schools, go from this account, additional responsibility stipends for principals and assistant principals. That's kind of what's happening, you know, what, what is supporting that school at the school level. The next category is 007. That is instructional support. Here, we pay our cheapest guidance, media, social workers, and on your personnel, we have 3.45 positions budgeted there. We also, this is where our contract with the Health Department for health nurses is paid from. We pay for health supplies, you know, latex gloves, those types of things. We do have a partial director position, one of the six position directors. We pay one of those out of there that supervises the media folks. The next group is 009, 328,000. That is guaranteed benefits. And what that means, and many of you have heard me say this before, if you're locally paid or if you're federally paid and you leave us, then we have to pay your annual leave days out. And we have to have, that's where that's, that gets paid from. And that really goes, you cannot predict that. Last year, we had about 80,000 left in that budget at the end of the year. The year before that, I had closer to 150,000. So that's, you know, we pay locally-paid people, we pay their longevity. But the other thing is, if someone is federally paid, you cannot use federal dollars to pay out their annual leave. So we pay it from there. Next is our CTE.
Makes no sense whatsoever. I mean, you're, continue.
Okay.
Gives me a headache.
The next.
Legislative brilliant.
The next is, falls under lines 254. This is what we put locally into our CTE program. That program receives federal funding, about $100,000. She see, she receives months of employment. This is her biggest piece of the state to pay for our CTE teachers. And then, she also receives a state 014, which she can use to pay positions if she doesn't get enough months of employment. But mainly, she pays supplies and materials, that type of thing. The next line is 032. That's what our local portion for our EC program. Following that is our AIG contribution, local contribution of 7,500. Like, next line 265 is what we anticipate transferring to charter school next year. Line 266, that has historically, up until this year, up until 1819 being PRC 048, we are going to change that to PRC 800. And the reason being, you want your local budget, if you're using any program numbers, you want that to reflect. If it's the same as state, you want that to kind of mirror and reflect the same. And so, that was, has always been safe school, safe and drug-free schools. And I think Dr. Nolte may have been over that program in the 80s. And this year, the state chose, they've not had that, that fund, those funds from state in several years. And so, they're now using 048 to pay teacher bonuses. So we did not want to be spending local 048 money and it not be for teacher bonuses. It's still for safe and drug-free schools. 054, that's our local piece for our LEP program. Again, they receive state and federal money. That's what we put in to help. Local 56 is our local budget for that, is 160,000. That is for yellow buses only. Those, all those expenditures must mirror state 56. The next line is 061, local supplies and materials. After that is 069, just a very small budget of $2,000, what we use to pay, to buy our dare books. Following that is middle school remediation for 100,000. 301, that's that ROTC offset teacher budget Dr. Nolte mentioned earlier. PRC 706, falling after line 296, that is ineligible transportation cost. That is anything that our Transportation Department does that does not, that doesn't involve a yellow bus. If they change the oil or change tires or whatever, we have to, for their time, we have to pay the state back if they're working on something that's not a yellow bus. And so, we use that money for that. Let's see, 802, athletic coaching supplements. 803, that's other curricular supplements, band, chorus, drama. High school remediation is line 307. Following that is PRC 805. That is a lot of ancillary money for program directors at the central office level, plus some money that goes to the schools. Line 326 is an allocation that we make to the schools. And line 328, large band instruments.
309, that's a school allocation.
Yes, sir, it is. And then, that's also where we have our set aside for band uniforms each year. 806 is our, our local technology. We do get some state money for devices and goods and services, basically, but we don't receive any state or federal money for technicians. So we, we pay for those locally. Topics, a piece of one of his people in his department out of our E-Rate funds. Following after that is curriculum development. Those are allocations. The first one is our HR department. The ones, lines following that are go to elementary, middle school, high school. It helps to offset some of their cost. For example, printing health cards or cum records, those types of things. Following that are teacher assistants.
Angie?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm the, jump back to line 328.
28.
Which is large band instruments. Why is that 10,000 that was requested before not in that line?
If you approve that, that request, that line will go to 17,000. This is just what our budget is this year, and we've tried to keep, keep just what we anticipate budget assumptions of salary increases.
We'll have to.
Any of these, it's together, but if you.
We have to approve that before we go into.
You'll, right, if, if all those items.
252 plus.
Yes, sir. If those get approved, then the next time you see this budget, you'll see those have worked their way into the lines. But we felt like this year, it was, it was better to see those separated out.
Is that a bucket?
All right. Okay. All right.
That's okay. Um, so PRC 809, following line 368, that's in-school suspension. We also pay Meridian Behavioral Health contracted services there. The next group is our employee supplement. Again, what, what I would like to do is, next fall, like we did this year when we're sitting there in August and September, if you'll recall, last year, we allowed 9% of this budget roll back into fund balance. So for, it's such a large piece of our budget, for every 1%, you're off. That's 20, a little over 20,000 rolling back into your fund, fund balance. And so, I wanted to get that a little bit closer. So if you'll recall, in August, we took who we were, who we had in place, and we budgeted, we shored that up. I'm going to be a little over-budget, it looks like at this point, but, but we'll be fine. I would be, much rather be 20,000 over-budget than to, you know, let almost $200,000 be, you know, have 200,000 more budgeted. We'll know that for sure in April. We'll pay March supplements this month. We'll see how, how that rolls. Let's see, 816, that's another. We do a lot of our employee recognitions, Teacher of the Year celebrations, those types of things come out of that $16,000 budget. The next line is for the old daycare center. We don't spend $8,000. We spend a couple of thousand dollars there. The next line after that, next group, is our school resource officers. We have this budgeted. We also use State 69 to pay the remaining SRO officers. And of course, when we get to the end of the year, in our State 69 budget, if we've not used all that we have budgeted for subs or other areas, we'll, we'll pay local back for that.
69's state at-risk money. A lot of that goes into Central Haywood. But if we don't use it there or in like places, then we can put it on the SROs.
That's right. Line 390 is Episcopal High School baseball lease. That's a lease agreement, plus we pay the property taxes. And then, line 391 is just, and budgeted, it's in case we need something somewhere during the year and have to move it. But we typically don't use that. I think one year, a couple of years ago, we may have used it for the Jonathan Valley chiller that went out. And then, you see the separate recommendations for this year following that. And then, our revenues have increased. Our funds and forfeitures and ABC revenues, just a tad. That's based on kind of what, what we received last year. It looks like those items are going up a little bit. I want to be a little conservative on that and make sure that I don't over-anticipate revenues in that area. That's it.
Very good. That budget's laid out really nice. Thank you for the hard. Thank you for the hard work on. And Dr. Garrett, too, early on. Yeah.
Team effort. It's, that's the queerest I've understood it since I, it's a big thing to get your arms wrapped around. I understand it.
Now, give me some numbers here. I can't do math, so we're looking at hopefully getting an increase of, let's see, two, four, six.
From the county?
From, yeah, from county fines, ABCs, indirect. So we're looking at an increase of 690,000.
800.
No, 690, correct?
Yes.
Roughly, 690.
Yes, sir.
And then you're looking at a budget increase of 4, 5, 6, 675.
You've got on salaries and benefits on line 392, we're anticipating budget assumptions of salary and benefits to be 4, plus the loss of 423.
And then if we approve the.
An extra 252.
252.
And so in order to meet those two increases, we're appropriating 211,000 over what's, we have appropriated this year in this budget.
Correct. Okay. Right.
It's close to seven, Mr. Francis, but I think we can go quickly on a couple of things.
All right.
Todd just wants to save you some time in a closed session, just to give you the background on one thing, and then Pat and I have, it's like, three quick announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have a fantastic testing department of one, and for the most part during the year, she works the same schedule as everybody else. But during testing season, when we have end-of-course and end-of-grade tests, she puts in lots of 14- and 16-hour days to try to get through those testing windows and get all of that stuff turned around. There's usually a time limit on, on how quickly we, we have to get that stuff turned around. And while she does a fantastic job, we began realizing earlier this year that we might have an issue. Like I said, she, she works lots of long hours to get that done, but this year, the state, in all of their wisdom, wants to take the process that we use, which means that, Francis, we would, last year, we would get in one testing form per student. This year, for every third through eighth graders, because of the kinds of tests they're doing this year, they've separated that into two forms. And so what that, in effect, has done, has doubled the amount of work that she's going to have to do during that time period, while unfortunately, with us having missed some days of school, it's also pushed us later in the year getting that done. And so what we're going to request is that we are able to hire, after spring break, a part-time person to assist her during those most difficult times, during that time when testing starts in May until the end of the school year, for lack of a better term, just helping her to get some of those things worked through. Now, because we knew this was coming, we're not asking to incur that debt in somebody else's budget. We, we began cutting back on our supply lines well back into the school year to make sure that we had enough money set aside. So when this came, if, if what we anticipated was probably going to happen did happen, we would be able to come to you and ask for, and ask for you to approve that position, knowing that the 10 or $15,000 that we likely would spend in part-time employment for this person is already sitting there in our testing budget ready to be used. And so I, I just felt like after talking to Dr. Nolte, I think we both felt like we would rather come and have that conversation tonight and answer any questions you guys might have, before you saw that on a closed session agenda that we were adding a position, you know, and begin wondering, what's this for?
Is this going to be like a new hire somebody?
This is going to be a temporary position, a part-time position, just to help during the time between spring break and the end of this year.
Two months.
Yeah, for two, two and a half months with that test, with that, that testing process. We, you know, we, we would like to maybe hire somebody that, that has, has had some testing experience, if we have someone out there that might be interested in additional employment, that, that might have a, you know, might have some experience with that testing process. But we have to have somebody that, that understands that, you know, that logistical process of going through accounting for testing materials, scanning testing materials, and putting those back out there.
Essentially twice the work for third through eighth grade. They'll have a math book and a reading book instead of one book with all of it in it. And then it really impacts retesting in summer school, because what we do is if, if I use the orange book for the regular test and I'm retesting or doing a test after summer school, then I get the green book. And now, I might have an orange one in math and a, and a red one in reading, and if I don't do well on both, it's just keeping up with all of that, twice as many materials. So again, that's just a gift from the state.
And that same person that you're talking about also does the summer school and the remediation or in summer school?
Sets all of that up.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Pretty busy.
It is a very tight timeline to get all of that turned around, and of course, I feel like we've been very successful because of the way we have been able to leverage some of those decisions we make in May and June, and we don't want to give that up. But at the same time, we want to make sure we have enough time to do it right.
I would hope you got somebody that's retired.
That, that is our hope, is that we could find a retired that's been there before.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, sir.
Pat has two quick property announcements.
Two things, Mr. Chairman, board. You know, for several years, there was talk with the Department of Transportation, North County Department of Transportation, about the property which lies between Lake Junisca School and the highway. Be most familiar with it is the old packing house property. They have conveyed that to the school system by quitclaim deed. The only sort of unusual thing about it is, is that it has a revert clause that says if the property is ever not used for education, parking, or sports facilities, it reverts the person back to the Department of Transportation. And then.
We can handle that.
And then the other thing is, just need to know if we ever tried to sell the property, that we don't get it, you know? And then the other issue is, if we were to expand the highway, we don't see, can't get compensated for any expansion.
They're going to take it without.
Put one there.
But that's, that is our problem. The other issue we discussed sometimes back is there was an offer from Mr. Junior Einhardt to kindly gift certain property to the school system for Pisgah High School to use as an alberity. The concern was that we could not, the funding was in question whether we could do that or not, so I wrote her a letter, and that should be in your file, hopefully, just thanking her for the gift. Could not commit future boards to any particular purpose, but if she still wanted to gift the property, it would certainly be interesting to talk to, thank her for, thank her to the school system. Those are the two items I have.
All right.
And then lastly, just for your information, well, they turned that mic up, didn't they? Lastly, just for your information, we have prepared the district improvement plan. We've been working on that since January 18th. We plan to bring that to you in April. We're going to vet that plan with all of the employee roundtable groups and the district-wide PTO. We thought we'd give you a sneak preview so you, we could get your feedback on anything that's in there. That's all we have, Mr. Francis.
Very good. Quick comment on the property down there. I think it's great that they finally saw fit to do that, and I've also been in contact with one of our representatives that assures me if there's any monies available for improvement of that, that it, they'll make every effort to make sure we get money for that. Up to $100,000 is what the number that was tossed out, so. Anything else? Well, thanks for everybody for coming and all the work.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job, Roger.